Good afternoon, everybody. It's Moscow's Public Works and Finance Committee for March 28th. To my right, Councilman Walter Steed. My left, Counselor Catherine Bonzo. City Supervisor Gary Redner to her left. First item on the agenda is the approval of the March 14th, 2016 minutes.
I think we're okay with me?
Yeah, I'm good with them.
I'm good with them too. So those are good. Next up is a public meeting for the lot division at 501 South Polk Street, courtesy of Rebecca Crouch. Yikes. Since this is a public meeting, we'll take public input after the presentation. Try to keep things short and tidy because the agenda is long today. So with that...
Good afternoon. Thank you. So for your review today is a lot division located at a parcel currently addressed as 501 South Polk. The subject property is located on the west side of Polk Street between Third and Sixth Street. The parcel is zoned multifamily residential R4 as well as all the surrounding parcels, with the exception of some general business zone properties that are owned by Leita County to the southwest. Taking a closer look at the subject property, you can see there's an existing principal structure towards the front of the lot and an existing small accessory structure just to the north of the principal structure. This is the proposed lot division that was submitted by the applicant. The existing lot is 12,889 square feet and is 78 feet in width, and the applicant is proposing to divide it into two parcels with this solid, slightly darker line being the dividing, the new property line, which would create a flag lot configuration to the north of the existing home and in the rear. That flag lot would have a 20-foot width out on the Polk Street frontage and an area of 7,854 square feet. The flag pole portion of the lot would not exceed 150 feet, which is what is allowed by code, and the 20 feet in width would be maintained back to the larger portion of the lot. The remaining rectangular parcel would be 58 feet in width along Polk Street and have an area of 5,035 square feet. The property has been surveyed, and so the new parcel lines would be, are shown very accurately on this map, and the existing principal structure was located 3.47 feet from the new north side yard property line for that parcel. So that does fall short of the required five-foot minimum side yard setback for that structure. The applicant has indicated that the existing structure is in need of a foundation, and so they intend to lift the structure, and at that time it would be fairly easy for them to also shift it to the south in order to satisfy that side yard setback. In addition, the small accessory structure currently on the north side of the parcel is located within the proposed flag lot, flag pole portion of the lot, and when you apply setbacks to that newly created lot, that structure would not meet the front yard setback. So the applicant has also indicated that that structure would be removed, so therefore it would be gone and we wouldn't have any setback issues with that parcel. Here's just another look at the aerial image with the proposed property line overlaid. As you can see, there's a drive, existing driveway here, and the only vehicle, current vehicle approach to the property off of Polk Street is on the north side of the parcel. And the existing parking for this structure is currently just on the north side of the existing home. So if there was, if there was no new curb cut or parking established on this property at the time that the lots were conveyed, it would be necessary to have an agreement recorded against the property for access and parking for use by this parcel. Within the R4 zone, the minimum lot width is 50 feet, and for flag lots, it's 20 feet. The minimum lot area is 5,000 square feet, and the proposal meets each of these requirements. The front yard setback in the R4 zone is 15 feet or 20 for a garage that faces the street, and the rear yard setback is 20. Side yard setback is a minimum of 5 feet, but the sum of the two shall not be less than 15 feet. And for flag lots, the code states that the flag pole portion of the lot shall not exceed 150 feet and shall not be less than 20 feet in width. Per city of Moscow requirements for lot divisions, the property owners within 600 feet of the subject property have been notified, and the site has been posted seven days prior to today's meeting. There was some public testimony that was received via email yesterday evening and has been sent out to the council members for their review and consideration. Staff's recommendation is to take public comment if applicable and recommend approval of the lot division request with the following three conditions, each occurring at the time that the property is conveyed separately. The first being that the existing single-family dwelling be relocated a minimum of 1.53 feet to the south in order to satisfy the five-foot minimum side yard setback requirement. The second, that the existing accessory structure be removed to satisfy the setback requirements. And the third, that an access/parking easement be recorded against the property if access and parking to the existing structure is going to remain in its current location. With that, I'm available for questions.
If there's not the choice made to move the parking record, the easement, and things like that, what's the city's policy on additional curb cuts?
There is one curb cut allowed per lot, so they would be allowed to establish any curb cut.
Anything now? Okay. Yep. Anybody out there have anything to say, pro, con, general comment? And as always, when you come up here, because we're on the record, name an address, please.
Yeah, I'm Scott Becker with Hodgins Associates, 405 South Washington. Our firm did the survey and the lot division lines that you saw there. I just wanted to make, you know, let you, you know, a couple of things. Right now, there's no, no plan for a structure in the rear of the lot. They've looked at some options on what they want to do, but before proceeding further with it, they'd like to actually have the lot division before, you know, in hand rather than try to make plans and then be denied a lot division. So they're kind of holding off on that. They've looked at other options, and to fit in with the neighborhood, they'd like to keep it similar to what's in the neighboring lots. Otherwise, they could just tear down the existing house and build apartment units to whatever, you know, maximize the lot. But they really do want to kind of keep with the feel of the neighborhood. So that was their plan. One of the developers is here doing whiting, so if you had questions. But otherwise, I believe I can answer any other questions that you might have regarding this.
Well, I appreciate, sorry.
Go ahead.
Clarification for the access/parking easement to be recorded against the property. Could you just kind of explain what that means exactly?
What that means is, is once they've decided how they want to develop the rear of the lot, then they'll decide what would make the most sense. It would probably be that there will be access easement, just continuing with the one access for both properties, and then an agreement for cross-parking and things like that that would just make it easier for both parcels to get along. But if, if it develops with such a way that another curb cut would be more desirous, then they would look at that option. But right now, the plan would be just to continue with the one access. It's going to be the cheapest way to do it and work with the, you know, it might even be owned by the same, same person could own both lots and either have them as one rental, one owner, two rentals, or whatever.
Okay, so if they kept that same access, then whatever extra parking they would have within their property?
That's correct. But, but once again, we haven't gone to that level, not knowing if the lot division would be approved.
Okay. Becky, on that condition regarding the access, if we were to approve this, what control does the city have weeks and months down the road when they decide how they're going to configure this and what they're going to do? And if they decide to have the single access for the flag lot to give the front lot a permanent access from the street?
Well, if it's not caught at the time that it's recorded with the county, it would be required at the time that a building permit is pulled for that.
So the building permit process would make sure...
We would certainly look at, if they are creating a lot that is taking away the parking for that existing structure, they would have to either recreate it on their lot or an agreement would be established to utilize theirs.
Yeah, my only comment, Mr. Chairman, is you just got handed a public comment that was sent to Becky and the city clerk today. That's from Eric Wanamaker. It was emailed out, so you've all had a chance to review. Just wanted that placed in the record.
Yes. Okay.
One more if I may. Scott, the flag lot pretty much centers on a fairly good-sized tree that's in the public right-of-way out by the street. If, is that tree going to stay, or would it have to go to create a better-than-current access up through that flag pole?
Actually, the tree can stay and the access can be widened, but there is, there is room to get in. You know, that public right-of-way goes all the way up to that, you can see the line. It's 30 feet off the curb. So even though the access might be narrow or combined for...
No plan, no plan to take the tree at this time?
Let's take the tree. And that, that was the reason that we didn't take the south side of that lot and come in on that approach, because we would have to take a tree to do that. And really, we're just trying to keep with the neighborhood feel and minimize the impact.
I have a question. Just real quick. Because people are concerned about how it would change, what are the possibilities that could be?
These are hot mics. Eric, Zach in the back, could you turn down the mics a little?
Just to get it out there so that the neighbors will feel more comfortable because they're concerned. I think that it would become more dense, that's...
Well, it will become more dense, but the intent is to keep as many of the street trees as possible, and even in the rear yard, if, you know, depending on what we develop back there, how we would, you know, try to minimize any tree-taking there, too.
Yeah, but what could be built there?
I can take that.
Yeah.
If you want. So really, any use that's permitted in the R4 zone would be allowed as it meets all the minimum lot requirements. Of course, subject to minimum parking requirements and setbacks.
So for some things, it could be a squeeze?
Yes.
Yeah. Right. Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else out there wish to comment on this application? So name an address so we know who you are.
My name is Jonathan Lumber, and I live at 419 South Polk Street, which would be north of this property, and we share the curb cut and the access. I was surprised to hear the comment that they have no plan at the moment for building, but the comment continued as to when it's developed, when it's developed. So the plan is to develop, I would say, that, both lots, a new foundation and a new home. What will that home be? I don't know. I've tried contacting the owners four different times, and they did not reply to any of my phone messages. I don't believe that this fits the identity, character, and the heritage of this neighborhood. Russell addition was plotted in 1881, around there, and this is the largest lot in the neighborhood. When I moved into that property at 501, 14 years ago, and lived there for seven years myself, and then moved next door. When I chucked out the lot to the house to rent it, I was really excited because it's a huge yard and room for a garden, and it has those plum trees, which I think potentially might have been left over from when the area was an orchard. So I think this lot has some significance, historical significance to it, and is better off left in its natural state as is. Creating a house in the back will basically create a small little alley along the property line for access in and out of there. They could, if they wanted to, take out the tree next to the driveway. The driveway cannot be expanded without probably killing the tree because the root ball is what limits it from expanding just from driving over it now. And if they wanted to, they could put in a whole other driveway curb access on the south side of the property for the house and take out another tree, which potentially will have to go at some point because it's just leaning into the roadway also. But that's a potential for an expanded curb cut and another curb cut and the loss of more parking on the street. Parking is already an issue, has been brought up again and again with other uses that people have wanted to use in the neighborhood regarding the daycare that went on the corner of Third Street when they proposed to take some parking away at that point, but we worked around that, too. There's already quite a few duplexes and houses on the street that have no parking available for them. There's a house with no driveway whatsoever. Homes, owner-occupied homes that have duplexes that have room for one or two cars and a driveway, and all the rest is pushed down in the street. And I know that whenever any of the other renters who have lived there since I moved out have been really enthusiastic about having the yard and an asset that that is for a rental, for a unique, in a unique place. And I know me personally probably wouldn't have lived there if there was a house in the backyard. I would have found some other place to live, but... I would just like to say again, it just doesn't meet the heritage and the history of the I think the property is better off left as is, and I think it'll be, no, there's no other flag pole lot as far as I could find between Sixth Street and D Street and Main Street and Blaine Street. That does not fit the area whatsoever. If there was an alleyway, this is unique that we don't have an alleyway here, and that would be a different, different situation. So thank you very much. Oh, I actually have a petition signed by 11 different households in the neighborhood that would request that the committee not approve this because it does not accurately represent the neighborhood's identity, character, and heritage. So there are 15 or 16 or so names from 11 different owners of property on the neighborhood. So I'm not sure.
Hand that up to Gary for inclusion in the record.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who else would like to speak on this issue? Same drill, name and address.
Hi there. David Slater, 509 South Polk Street. So I am the property directly to the south of this property. I have been in the home for 16 years, and I think I do have some concerns about a flag pole lot and the potential for another structure to be built in that, in that backyard. A lot of my concern is based not upon the current owner, who I don't know, and that's a new owner, I suppose, but in the 16 years that I've lived there, the property has not been maintained exceedingly well. On the property line, there's a section of fence, I believe it's about a third of the backyard is fenced, and then there's temporary fencing, and there's some chicken wire and lilacs that separate my property from the 50, is it 501?
Yep.
Yeah. So there's, in the backyard, you can clearly look into the other yard. The fence that is there has been propped up, propped up by the past owners so that it doesn't fall down. In the front of the yard, there was a tree. A portion of that did come down into my roof, and then it was trimmed after that and taken out, but it is also causing the rock wall to slump over as well. So that whole property line has been not maintained very well, and I haven't been able to...
Relative to the issue at hand, the subdivision?
Well, if another structure was to be built behind there, there would be no privacy for me. You know, I would, I would at least expect that there'd be a better separation between the properties. I just haven't seen that, you know, in the past that that's, that's been a concern. So I'm concerned about more density, obviously. I'm not sure how tall the structure could be built in the back. How many stories will be allowed?
R4 gets you...
40 feet, I think.
Something like that.
So certainly a 40 feet, you know, potential of a 40-foot structure that overlooks into my backyard is definitely something I'm concerned about. I don't know what the plans are. I've not been told anything. Obviously, as we heard, there's no plans yet, but that's definitely a concern for me. So the increased density would be a big concern for my, for myself because I'm a property owner that lives next door. I'm not sure about the front being developed, if that could be developed into parking. All our, all of the bedrooms in my house are on the north side of the house, so, you know, there's a potential that people would be pulling in and parking in the front of that house, in front of the first house or structure. So, I mean, those are some of my concerns, just in terms of not wanting to see... My preference, obviously, would be a single-family home, improved home, improved separation between the houses, and, and not to increase the density to potentially, I guess, I don't know what the maximum density could be in the lot.
A lot more than it is.
A lot more than it is, yeah. And so that's definitely my concern for, for myself as a homeowner and for the rest of the neighborhood.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to spur full-on excitement today.
I'm Becky Chastain for Seven South Polk, and I, rather than repeat what they've said, I'll just say I agree with Jonathan and David.
Thank you. Brilliant. Others?
So Becky, when I was asking that question, and that's the concern, what is the density that the neighbors are concerned? What's the total, if the split did happen and they built another structure in the back, what's the total amount of people that could live there? That's the...
Well, there's really not a hard number for that. It really comes down to, if it's a multifamily structure, it comes down to whether or not they can fit the parking. That's really what it comes down to. I can't give you a figure for that. I might note that as the lot is today, it could, the house could be torn down and a multifamily structure could be constructed on it without dividing the lot. So it's eligible today for everything that is permitted within the R4 zone.
And that's a good point to keep in mind. But please...
Hi, Brent Billings, 415 South Polk Street. So just to, I mean, I generally agree with the previous comments. Just a couple of things I want to add is that parking is only permitted on one side of our street, so that is, that's kind of the reason for the parking concerns, I think. And just the idea that our neighborhood is, there are a few multi-unit structures already, but in general, it's a lot of single-family homes, a lot of kids in the neighborhood, at least on my side of the street. And so I definitely like the idea of keeping it as a single-unit structure, and like if I had several kids, like the idea of a big backyard is very appealing, and so I like the current size of the lot. The, the primary structure that's there right now definitely needs some attention. I know it's, it's, the foundation is in disrepair or nonexistence or whatever.
Can I ask you a question as a neighbor?
Sure.
Everybody sounds like it's like their park, so are people accessing the land? I mean, are they...
No.
No one goes there? They just look at it?
I, I mean...
I don't, I'm not trying to make fun. I'm just trying to understand. It just sounds like there's this park feel that it...
No, well, like I, I walk by it every day, you know, and the...
Call up the overhead, the mat?
Yes.
Yeah. I guess I'm just trying to understand. So nobody goes on that property?
No, not to my knowledge.
Right. But everybody feels like it's a park in a way because it's...
Well, speaking along the same lines as the gentleman from 509, like we can see into each other's backyards. So I live at 415, but I also kind of have an interest in 419 and 40, whatever it is to the north of me, like... So the, and there's, there's a duplex across the street at 402 and 404, and presently the occupants are very friendly, but previously they have not been so. So that's definitely a concern with the idea of a few, like two new structures, potentially duplexes or, or greater, depending on what they decide to build. So that's a lot of extra people, a lot of extra renters, a lot of extra potential for the kinds of people we don't really want in the neighborhood.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I was going to do a countdown.
My name's Donna Gotchak. I live at 420 South Polk, which is across the street from the residence, and I agree with everything that they've already said. One of my concerns is the existing house doesn't have a foundation, and there's, you know, if they knocked that down, they have the, when you make the split, you could potentially put a fourplex there and a fourplex in the back. So I mean, that's a lot of rentals.
It is.
So I just wanted to point that out.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't fit, I don't feel it fits in the neighborhood either.
Okay, last call. Okay, Walter.
Becky, how long has this been R4? Do you know?
A long time. I don't know. It's been R4 for a while.
Okay. And is the entire east side of this block of South Polk R4? Okay.
Yeah. So that has historically been R4 for many years, that whole area. The GB was just recently rezoned.
That's the county's parking lots. So the, so the east side of the street is R4. The entire rest of the block to the north is R4. Everything south of it is R4, so... I guess the R4 is my problem.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know how to deny this. If they were asking for a rezone to do this, it would be harder to go along, probably. The fact that it is R4, has been R4, that there, the bottom right corner of the same street's got a multifamily apartment building, that L-shaped unit on it. I understand the neighbors' concerns, the desire not to change anything, but I don't know how I can vote because they don't want a change that's legally allowed.
Well, on my part, I'm not a great fan of flag lots of any kind, any place, and as was pointed out, there are no other flag lots in the near vicinity anywhere here, and having lots hidden behind lots is something that I think changes the intrinsic character of the neighborhood and provides essentially special treatment here. And so for that reason, I'm not much in favor of this, and I'm not a fan of this one. So Catherine, what do you think?
I agree with what both of you have said. I don't know what we do next, then.
Well, what we do is we...
We kick it up.
We kick it to the full council with a recommendation of yea or nay.
Or not.
Yeah. And, and let the full body take it on.
Well, I did feel like that the, that they were trying to use the flag designation to not have to take down the structure. So they're trying to preserve something and then, and utilize that structure. But I understand that, it sounds like the, the fear is that that won't happen or some, and that, that that structure will be taken down. And so then, once it's taken down, then that changes everything. And so I think that's why, in trying to ask questions, you know, to you, and it's trying to get a little more definitive answer because it's not clear and that's why we're in...
And the other issue is too, that if this subdivision does not go through, then all rights devolving upon any lot owner in an R four zone can take place, which means that they could fell the original structure and build any structure that is suitable in an R four neighborhood by right and wouldn't even come back through this body. So to that extent, I'm somewhat torn as well. Gary?
So again, your options are recommend approval with no condition. If there are conditions that you feel you can approve, which would mitigate the impact of the neighborhood, you're free to do that. Or you're free to recommend that you, it's not approved and it'll go to the council.
I didn't, I didn't hear the full list. We, we can recommend it to go to full council with no recommendation.
Absolutely.
Thank you. That'd be my choice.
I would choose that as well, but with the comments and public record that we've received here as part of the packet and provision.
In order to give the council some kind of guidance, are there any, the conditions that have been recommended by community development? I assume if it's approved, those conditions would be acceptable. Are there any additional conditions that you would recommend to enlighten the council in their beginning deliberations?
Nothing that would be a, would rise to the level of any kind of a reasoned criteria within the law, just the concerns over flag lots and, and issues of alteration of the historic neighborhood character there. So, but other than that, I think just put it forward to council without recommendation because we've got one leaning yea, one leaning yea, and one standing vertically, not leaning in a direction. So...
Right.
Okay.
There wasn't enough information for it to be clear.
So we'll put that on the regular council meeting agenda and we'll relive all of this again.
If I may, just a comment that Catherine has made. Is there additional information you would like us to develop in order to...
Oh, so I can, you can do that? Okay, yes, I would.
Certainly, we can...
I would like, because the questions I ask from Scott is that because the concerns have to do with what's going to happen to the house or not to the house, I mean, they talked about rising, I mean, raising the foundation. Is that really what they're going to do? And then people are wondering what's going to be in the back. I think the fact that it's also nebulous is what's so confusing. And I understand what Art's saying because you do get two different personalities if, if that's, that flag designation, you get, you could have something happening in the front and you don't even know what's going to go in the back. It's, it's just, there's just a lot of fuzz around it and...
Well, we can't go further because the action is for a subdivision. And as a legal body, that is the topic that we are limited to considering. We cannot consider what may or may not happen on any of the lots generated. However, I would like a further explanation or exploration, iteration of what can go on an R four lot. Height, density, all the rest of it.
Catherine, perhaps what I can do is ask the city attorney to contact you to talk generally about the scope of the review.
Okay, that would be great, thank you.
Okay, let's go on with that. So this one will be back before the full council at its next regular meeting, next Monday, 7:00 PM. So for all those who are interested, please come back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you, Becky.
Next up, booster station phase one bid results, Kevin Lilly. Good afternoon.
We did have a bid opening last week and it was for the first three of our booster station replacements. We got three bids. The engineer's estimate was $1.895 million. This is for the Vista, the Taylor, and the White Avenue booster stations. So the engineer's, engineer's estimate was $1.895 million. The three bids that we received, the low was from Apollo Incorporated of Kennewick at $2.317 million. TML Construction at $2.687. And SNL Underground of Bonners Ferry was $3.2 million. We were quite disappointed with those numbers. The low bid is approximately 122% of the engineer's estimate. We don't have a good explanation at this time for that difference because it was bid as a lump sum for all three, all three booster stations. So therefore, each contractor submitted one number rather than being able to pick through and, and see where they varied. We are having Keller and Associates, who were the designers, have them contact the responsive bidders and see how and why they were off and what we might be able to do to repackage and rebid this to make it, bring it in at a, at a lower number. So based on those results, our recommendation is that the council reject all bids. And at that, if that occurs, then the DEQ needs to concur with that decision. And we'll take it from there and try to get us back on track.
Agree.
I think so too. Although I'm not keen on not having booster stations go ahead, but still, if DEQ would like to provide the extra 22% difference, I'm sure we'd be happy to take it, but...
Only if it's, only if it's grant money.
Yeah. But I don't see any way to go forward this, given the difference in the prices, that's huge.
I just have a question about when do you think that you'll have that information?
We were going to wait and see what the decision was of the council as the bids are currently still viable. Didn't want to start picking through those with individual contractors until we had a decision on the, on the award.
Well, I'll go ahead and move.
Yep, got one more comment from Gary.
Yeah, my comment had to do with, this is coming in above what we'd anticipated. The original engineer's estimate is above what we had anticipated when we got the DEQ loan. So I've asked Les and Kevin to work to try and put together an overall scope so we can see what the impacts are with our current capital plan, so on and so forth. So this will give us a chance. Had these come in where they needed to, you know, we could get started. And of course, as you said, the public exigency of getting that done makes a lot of sense. But we do have to look forward to getting all of the booster stations done. This will give us a chance to kind of retrench a little bit and bring you a, a more informative package.
Might a future bid also include some of the other booster stations that we've been discussing? Like as part of the Peekaboo Development and other areas?
I think those are all on plan, aren't they?
Our plan was if these bids had come in and where we felt was reasonable, we were, were poised to proceed with the next two stations immediately, so we've kind of stopped...
If we're kind of back in retrenching, is it possible to include the other two as part of a rebid?
That would be probably, it could be done, those are not designed. So in fact, we don't have the property for the one that we're hoping to acquire. But it would probably be a year down the road.
Yeah, that's a ways. So, okay.
Okay, so I move to recommend rejection of the bids. And with the forward results to the Department of Environmental Quality for their concurrence. And then when you get that reply, then you can move forward with, I guess...
What to do next.
Yeah, what to do next, yeah.
Well, DEQ doesn't have to concur.
I thought that's what he said.
That's what it says.
Under the terms of the, the loan documents, I believe they do. It, it's not that they would not concur, but they want to show a reason and, and higher price is a valid reason. But part of the process is for the council, if they choose to reject the bids, it goes to DEQ and they bang their gavel and say rejected too.
Yeah, they're just the banker, but...
They, they are, but this is one of the fail safes they use to make sure we're following public bid processes for approval and that sort of thing as well.
Consent? Yep, I agree. Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Next up, cellular equipment co-location on the Vista water tank, Jesse.
Good afternoon.
Good day.
So the city has been approached by T-Mobile again with a request to install some equipment on, cellular equipment on the Vista water tank. Currently, there is no equipment installed on that tank. We do have equipment installed on the northeast and northwest tank. There's a couple of issues with their proposal. One is that the tank, and previously when T-Mobile approached the city, the city had requested to have renderings showing what the tank would look like after the tank installation because there was quite a bit of care into the design, painting, and facade of the tank for the neighborhood. And T-Mobile did not follow through on that request and we just were waiting to hear back from them. We did have an onsite meeting with T-Mobile's contractors, some employees, Public Works, and myself to look at the site. They, they have a couple more options now than they did before for how they run their equipment, using fibers of large coax, using remote head units, things of that nature, which made it a more attractive site for them that they could potentially work around some of the design constraints or more flexibility for how they install their equipment. We did bring up with them that a pole might be an easier option for the site or that they could go another rise over me in the county and not actually be in the city. But they, T-Mobile does want to try to attach the tank beyond, before they go through the process of putting in a pole. So the other change that we need to look at is their proposed attachment method is using magnets to attach the antennas and cable trays to the tank. And our co-location resolution specifies stud capacitor discharge welding, which is not really encouraged by Public Works because it can cause problems with both the exterior and interior coating of the water tank as well. So we just have a couple of questions on if we should continue to work with T-Mobile to come up with a proposal with these variations or if we, the committee and council prefer to keep no installations on that tank.
Gary?
Yeah, this has come before the council on several occasions in the past. And they've always involved either bolting or welding a rack or a rail around the side of the tank. As Les McDonald and the Public Works folks have indicated, they're not excited about that because its main use is a water tank and you don't want to try, you don't want to...
Get a hole in it.
Exactly. So this magnetic attachment is really a little bit of something different. It appears that it's something that is worth looking into. It isn't invasive to the tank. It'll have to meet all the engineering requirements. The co-location policy is pretty clear. When the council passed that years ago, it was in the face of a proliferation of cell tower installations. And the council was very concerned, as had been done in many other cities at the time. It was back when Dale Pernula was the community development director here, which is longer than most people have worked in the city of Moscow. But he brought that forward because in other parts of the country, they were just springing up all over. There were RFI discussions, you name it, electromagnetic wave pollution dangers, that sort of thing, which prompted the city to move ahead with the co-location policy. It's worked very well up till now, that we've had very few cell tower installations that have come before the council through the, I believe it's a conditional or special use, conditional use permit process. So council's been very good about having co-location even on city facilities, if at all possible. We've got co-location facilities on City Hall, I believe the Egan Youth Center. You know, we've tried to facilitate...
The Oplus Tower has...
You bet. The Residence Street Tank, Northwest Tower, you name it, the Rotary Tank have all, and, and it's worked out. It's not without its complications, but they've been overcome. And it seems to work well. This is a situation, if the attachment method appears to be something that is non-invasive and can be used in the tank, it'd be at least administration's recommendation that you move ahead with the discussion.
Would we have to change the policy about means of attachment to include alternatives? So would that have to be changed as well?
Quite likely, we probably, we probably work with Public Works and, and Information Systems and have them research out the method so that it's, you know, if it's, it's a viable alternative, let's work it into the policy. If it's not, then let's determine that as well.
Walter?
Gary, does co-location only mean a provider on our structure?
No.
What does it mean?
It means if someone, in order to have a cell tower in Moscow that requires conditional use permit, it's a, it's the policy of the city that whoever builds that cell tower also allow co-location of other providers and they get to charge for it.
And so what do we do on effectively our tower, i.e. the water tank?
We would allow, you mean, how many providers would you allow up there?
Would, would approval of this preclude Verizon, AT&amp;T, pick a name?
From being on that same tank?
From being on the same tank?
No. No.
So this request from one provider, a consideration is that what they do not preclude other providers?
Precisely. If you look at Residence Street and Northwest Tank, they all have different providers on those tanks.
So we could end up effectively with a porcupine up there with, with antennas all the way around it?
Jesse can tell you more of the technical capacity of the tank, but yes, you wouldn't have just one sector around the tank. You'd have a proliferation till it wouldn't hold anymore, at least you'd have that capacity. But the alternative is, is that you don't have a bunch of cell towers around in the community.
Okay, and if I may, Les got up here before I asked him to come up. What, what's Public Works' position on this particular request and, and that particular tank?
Certainly. The Public Works Department, to be honest, has not been terribly thrilled with the whole idea of cellular facilities. We work with them because that's the city policy. When it comes to Vista tank, part of the issue in the past, as Gary pointed out, has been the provisions that if a facility is attached to a tank, it'd be through welding method. That does cause damage to interior, exterior coatings on tanks, which are very expensive to repair. This particular proposal has a variation though. And in that, it's proposing a magnetic system called a magnum out. I have done some research on this, on tanks primarily in California, but a few back in the Midwest as well where they've been installed. The reports on this method of attachment are pretty good, pretty favorable. Folks have not seen necessarily, or have not identified damage to the coatings due to the magnetic mounting system. They have had some issues with certain installations not having enough magnets so they'd move in a high windstorm and shuffle around, so they just have to be designed appropriately. So that being said, it, you know, I think that the attachment method being proposed has a viable chance of working in this situation. The other aspect, though, that we need to consider here is this particular tank, which is Vista Reservoir. Vista was designed to try to blend into the Horizon in that part of town. The city put extra effort into it, extra cost into the construction and the paint structure and, and all of that to help it be a little bit more camouflaged, if you will. Part of our concern is that as soon as you add any kind of components onto that smooth surface, that's the, the blue, sky blue portion along the top, then you're going to break that up and it becomes highly visible. And so then we lose that aesthetic component that we tried so hard to achieve some years ago. So that's really our main concern with this particular tank and this request. Other tanks in the system, yes, we've worked around the cellular facilities, they do create problems for us. We've had corrosion issues identified by our maintenance folks and vendors that have come in and worked with us over the years. We've worked with that, we've had to make frankly some repairs associated with cellular. So it's, it's, it's an interesting topic still today in my discussions with some of the other agencies out there. A few of them are going away from cellular on tanks. They have said, you know, no more, we're stopping, we're taking them off. Others say they love it still and they love the revenue that comes with it. Others say they love it still, and they love the revenue that comes with it. So, it's, you know, mixed bag. But, for this particular installation, I think the proposal, the proposed attachment method has potential. We still have concerns with it just being on this tank, and the disruption to the aesthetic value that was placed on this tank.
So, so it's primarily aesthetic at this point?
For this particular installation, yes. We do have some operational concerns as well, and anytime we add more components around these tanks, that's more that we have to deal with for our maintenance crews that go out to the sites, being around the antennas. When we do paint these tanks, and we have to have the providers come and take them off, you know, and that's part of, you know, talking to an outfit in San Diego, one of the water districts, that was one of the issues they had. They had to paint a tank, they had so much problem getting the vendors to come in and remove everything, they just said it's not worth it. So, it's part of what we're seeing, and we've had some issues with that, as we've had to deal with tank repairs and painting. That would be something we'd have to consider when we think, recoat this tank in the future.
Probably mention to them, you plan to paint over their antenna, and it won't work after you do, they might want to come move it for you, but that's another discussion.
Jesse.
With the maintenance that we've done on the other tanks recently, they've actually had the providers shut down the antennas, not remove them, which has seemed to work fairly well, so that the painters and operators can actually be up near those antennas safely, without worrying about a radiation exposure. So, normally the procedure was, they notify the carrier, the carrier shuts down the sector they're working on that day, and then bring it up when they're done.
Yeah, the challenge we have there is anytime that there's something attached to that, over a coating, though, and you're painting around it, and then you're not painting that coating. And so, when that provider says, okay, we're done, we're going to take our magnet off, now you have these spots that are no longer properly coated, because they haven't had the, the updates, if you will, so.
Catherine.
Les, I just wanted to ask you a question about the wind?
Yes.
Because we know that that's a variable here?
Certainly.
So, what did you find out with, did they have any fall, and at what wind speed?
Yeah, the, the design has to be done to accommodate the wind loads that you would see in any given environment. The, whether it's, you know, bolted, welded, or magnetic mount system, you have to design the system to accommodate the wind loads that would occur. In the case of the magnet system that failed down in Southern California, it was actually a cable tray that went across the top of the tank. It wasn't the antennas themselves, it was just a tray that carried all that transmission cable. And it slipped off when it went, it took an antenna with it. And what they said was they just didn't put enough magnets in the design of the, of the cable tray. And obviously, they're doing a better job of that today. So, it's just the kind of thing you have to make sure in the design and process.
Actually, it's sounding to me like we're just involved in the area of speculation at the moment, and I think perhaps we could discuss with staff, say, staff, go ahead, talk to T-Mobile, see what they've got, see what they can do, find out some more information, and see what we can do about this, because it doesn't sound, because we're kind of in the yay-nay, let's speculate up a storm area. And I think it'd be better just to finish getting real facts. What can they do? What are they willing to do? What are we willing to compromise on? What are we not? Issues like that. Walter.
Les, the site plan that we've got, the aerial shows two locations for equipment.
Yeah, and those would not be where we'd place them.
I'm sorry?
Those is not where we would allow those to be placed. Those are in the location that would not work for us from a maintenance perspective. When we met with them in the field, we talked to them about actually going into the bank on the south side of the access road, similar to what we're doing with the booster station construction. So, they'd be placed further down the hill, and cut into that bank, just north of that line of trees, that's south of the driveway. Where they've got them shown, it's highly exposed, it's within our operation area for cranes and such, that we have to bring in there, so they couldn't be located there.
And they show two additional site expansion areas?
They do.
Would those be for other providers, I'm guessing?
I think that was their intent, yes.
So, in laying out the site of this, your considerations of ability to maintain our stuff up there, they would need to identify where they want to be in a different location with their showing, and also show additional provider locations for additional providers, if we go with this at all.
I think it's generally a reasonable request. You know, as we've looked at sites, you know, that we have in the city, we're often looking at multiple vendors that want to come in, so we want to make sure that we're accommodating, you know, those multiple locations for the on-ground systems, as well as the on-tank systems.
And then, if I may, one last question, try not to speculate, but however, if Jesse, they were to agree to go to what I've called flagpoles, the single vertical pole like over here on South Main, and there's one behind Jiffy Lou at Pullman, I think, can multiple providers get in those? In other words, if T-Mobile were to agree, we will not attach to your tank, we just want your property, and we'll put up three vertical poles spaced around it to get 360 degree coverage, can other providers get in that, or do we end up with all of these sticks out there?
As I recall our conversation with them, they determined that multiple poles are not a preferred solution, and that if they were going to be doing a pole on the site, they'd be doing it up to the northwest side of the tank, up where there's the path heading over to the park?
Yep.
As the best, or southwest part of it.
So, they do a single pole?
A single pole there. And then, the poles are designed so that additional carriers can then build up as needed.
Okay.
That's a monopole with...
An extension.
Yes. Outside arrays. I think Walter's talking about the stealth poles that look like a...
Yeah, I'm talking about stealth poles.
Yeah, those are frequently a type of monopole, if they can continue to build up on height, those, they can extend those.
So, anyway, it sounds like continuing to talk with them and find out what the parameters of the whole project are apt to be, and what we can do, what they want to do, back and forth a little bit more, and get some more information.
So, I guess a question to, for clarification for us, in the last go-round, when this went to council, one of the things that was requested was a set of renderings showing what these facilities would look like. And there was a presentation that I had put together, I actually have it here, again, if you have an interest, but, that showed, you know, some of the pictures of what the site looked like, and potentially what it could look like with attachments. But, the council was, I think rightfully so, wanting to have them provide renderings of what it would truly appear to be, so I guess the question would be...
That would be on their tab, if you ask me.
Is that something that we would be looking for again?
That's another one of the gatherings of information that I mean, yeah.
I would ask just for clarification, how much detail of renderings do you want? They gave one that was included in the packet that had three little rectangles. I mean, are you looking for a significant rendering beyond that?
I'm looking for something a little more, because anything you see is going to depend on the time of the day and where the sun is casting shadows. And so, that's going to be a factor involved with that, so as the sun goes west, some of these are going to be shooting shadows, because they stick out from the tank, and that's going to be a visual impact. So, I would like to see something more detailed than just the three rectangles.
Can I ask, and I just want, it is not clear, would you prefer, I mean, because you've taken so much for this tank, would you prefer to have alone standing something next to it? Is, I mean, because that's what it seems like you're saying.
From Public Works' perspective?
Yeah.
Yes, we would prefer that. We'd prefer not to have anything on this tank.
Right.
Understanding that, you know, there are other issues beyond just the desire of Public Works Department, so.
Yeah, I know. And, and from the IT perspective?
My position is really more of, I'm trying to facilitate the process. We have a co-location resolution that states we will co-locate if possible.
Okay.
So, we have a resource, we have infrastructure. My position is that we should take advantage of it, for the benefit of the city and improve service for the community.
Sounds a lot like not my tank.
So, anyway, I think gathering more information to decide exactly what the ratio of benefit to detriment on the project is, and get it tuned in a little more, and talk with the T-Mobile people some more, and then bring back what you find, then we can make a better decision about where do we stand on this? Do we want to go for this, or no, y'all go out and build a tower someplace, pull?
And I want to go out and drive around this thing from a distance, and see how much of it still shows above the trees. I mean, when it was first built, and I was looking straight at it, I could see the whole tank down to the dirt. I've got to try to remember how much of it still shows. Those trees have grown up, so make sure that we're, we're looking at present-day aesthetics.
So, is that...
We need, we need some time, apparently, Gary.
I think we've got some guidance. The answer is an absolutely not, which is what they need to know. So, it's up to them whether they want to develop enough plan to come back.
And they could wind up doing the same thing they did before, and just nah, too much work, and just drop it, so. Although, I would like to see us revisit the methods of attachment beyond the welding.
Yeah, the, as I recall in reading through the co-location ordinance, it does say that if it is to be welded to the tank, it is through that method.
Yeah, and I, I think...
In this case, we wouldn't...
Yeah, and so, I'm thinking just...
Wouldn't want welding.
As more general city bit of business is to look at a broader review of that ordinance.
It could certainly could stand for an update, and, you know, depending ultimately on where we go with this, this particular decision, something that we may recommend is, you know, maybe we, if we choose, or the council chooses ultimately not to allow installations on Vista, that we maybe take it out of the consideration in this ordinance, because right now, this is, applies to everything, so.
Yep.
Speaking with the carriers, they think that it could be fairly easily attach four to five carriers, because of the ability to angle the antennas as they mount to it. Also, based upon the previous conversations with Public Works and the carriers, we do not support anything being above the height edge of the tank, based upon the moving membrane that the tank top is. So, most of the equipment will be the flexes, up and down. So, the attachment will be to the sidewall of the tank, not to the top.
Cool. Okay, so consent with the direction to go forth and keep talking.
Okay, so I think this will go back, won't go on to council. We'll develop the information and bring it back to you.
That works. Great. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have D Street Grind and Inlay Fiscal Year 2016 Bid Results and Contract Award. Scott, what week would be complete without a visit to us?
Yeah, it's that time of year. So, the first one up is the D Street Grind and Inlay. This is an extension of the other projects we have going on in the area. So, starting off, this is part of the project where we have the middle school safety project, where we're going to be adding the crosswalks and the curb extensions and everything to improve area for pedestrians and everything out there. That was a grant program, or grant project that we're doing. So, with that, with all the stuff that we'll be putting out there, we'd have asphalt patches everywhere we'd be putting back for, and that particular part of the road from Grant Street to Mount View has already seen a lot of wear and tear and everything, so. But, the type of problems we're having with the asphalt out there right now is not something that's base-related, but more of a top-down failure. So, being able to grind off the top two inches, coming in, doing the project that we have for the middle school safety project, and then at the end, topping it back off with brand-new two inches, should make everything look nice and brand-new out there once we're done. So, we put this project out to bid to three local contractors. We had an engineer's estimate of $65,000, and to our surprise, the three contractors gave us pretty good bids back, with Motley Moly coming as low bid at $46,960, which is much lower than we were expecting, so our recommendation would be to award it to Motley Moly to do the project for this.
Of course.
These were, these were true bids, not quotes?
These are, well, it's semi-formal bidding.
Were these, were these sealed bids?
Yes. So, anything below $100,000 is semi-formal, would still seal bid.
It was sealed bid, okay. I'm, I'm fine with it. I would just want to ask Scott, you've got a 10% contingency on this, is that enough? I mean, it's only $4,600, you're well below estimate, well below budget. I wonder if you'd rather have a 20% contingency approval, so you don't have to come back to council?
It would help, yes. It depends on, because what we're going to be doing west of Grant is going to be a continuation of the, the AR chip, the asphalt rubber chip seal, that we talked about last time. So, there's that missing gap between what we had originally in the project to Grant Street from Hays. So, from Hays to Grant, I wasn't quite sure which, we're going to extend the grind inlay or extend in the asphalt rubber chip seal, so.
Well, I guess my question had the same, ran along with Walter, like you figured that the budget was going to be a certain amount, and you came in way under, and so I'm, I'm thinking you're going to want to, yeah. So, I agree that the contingency has to be different.
Give you a little more elbow room?
Yeah.
Gary?
The contingency is from the purpose of change order within the scope of the original project.
Understood.
It's not intended to expand the project.
No, 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 no.
So, well, what you're authorizing is expansion of the project.
No, I'm not.
But you can.
You can, certainly you can.
Within the project specifications, we are allowed to go up or down 25%.
Yeah. I'm just, I'm just trying to save them from coming back to council, with, we'd like to do 11% more work, because we want to close this gap thing, that's all.
And I think that's, it's certainly up to the council to do that. Just I wanted you to understand that you are expanding the project beyond the original project's scope, and that's fine. You're getting pavement redone, that's, that's great.
We're not paying more per unit, we're, we're, we'll buy what we're getting.
If we've got a good price, if it's, if it's Public Works' recommendation that this is a good price, we ought to expand it within the budgeted amount, hey, that's fine, as long as council understands what it's doing.
Yep, and I think the timing is good for it, too, as part of the other project. Timing's great. So, shall we go forth, the consent, and with the stipulation that we include a 20% contingency? Set?
Can do that, you bet.
Good enough.
That's good.
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere, Scott. Next up is the pedestrian curb ramp improvement project fiscal year 2016 Bid Results and Contract Award.
So, this is another year of doing the ITD grant projects, for doing pedestrian ramps on the highway system within the city limits. This year, we're going to be doing six ramps on Washington at Sixth, Seventh, and Eighth Streets. And this is one where the, the cooperative agreement was approved by council back in December for $60,000. The engineer's estimate for this year was around $61,000, $60,172, which this particular, unlike the years before, has a lot more work involved with utilities around the pedestrian ramps, so there's a lot more cost involved with that, too, just the locations. The bids were put out to local bidders, and came back with a range of $61,933 to $79,240. But, the, the low bid was Curtis Concrete Construction out of Pullman at $61,933, which really wasn't that far off the engineer's estimate or the funding related to this. We have $60,000 from the grant, and the remaining funding would come from the sidewalk, sidewalk improvement line item. So, we'd recommend that the, this year's ITD ramp project goes to the low bidder of Curtis Concrete.
I'm good, do it.
Me, too.
And I'm good, too. Do it. Consent? Thank you. And, once again, consent, yeah. And once again, Scott, cured-in-place pipe rehabilitation fiscal year 2016 Bid Results and Contract Award.
So, yeah, this is another extension of a type of construction that we are starting to do every year. It's a rehabilitation type of construction, as opposed to a trench and replace sewer pipe. This is a non-invasive method that is used where they put a, essentially a resin liner into the existing sewer line, as long as the sewer line is in the type of condition that it can still be lined, where they cure it in place, and essentially creating a new pipe inside of a pipe. And it's a lot more cost-effective method than some of the other ways of doing it. So, this year, we put it out to replace 3,800 feet of the 24-inch trunk line that essentially runs from, from Stadium West to the wastewater treatment plant. We have three lines that are running there, two 24-inch, one from the early 1900s, this one that we're proposing that was put in in 1950s, and then we have the new 36-inch line that was just put in a couple of years ago. So, the idea of this year's program is to essentially do the 3,800 feet. We put it out to bid, it was estimated at $460,000, which is based upon the numbers we were told last year by the contractors, who had been telling us that it was essentially going to be $110 to $120 per linial foot to do this size line. Well, this year, when we put it out, we got three bids back, and all three bids were much less than we were expecting, which is a good thing, with the low bid coming in from Michael's Corporation out of Salem, Oregon at $364,647. So, I mean, we recommend that we award the bid to Michael's Corporation for $364,647.
It's so nice when they come in underestimated, so. What do you think, Walter?
Are you, you're comfortable with the $20,000 difference between the low bidder and the other two bidders?
Yeah. This particular company is well-known for their product, where they do it and everything.
And you, and you've only truly got one lateral on this trunk line?
The items for the lateral and the other, the trimming were just in case something was ran into. We have video of majority of the line, but we weren't able to get video all the way to the very end because of infiltration. That's one of the main reasons why we're doing the lining, too, is because of the infiltration that soaks into the pipe and fills it up. Right now, the pipe is currently closed off at the wastewater treatment plant and then back at the diversion box where we're going to start and stop at. So, it's a closed pipe, yet groundwater has been still infiltrating the entire time, so they are only able to video a certain amount of the pipe. So, just in case, we put those bid items, in case we ran into something-
There may or, may or may not be there.
That may or may not be there. That way, we don't have to go through a change order to add additional bid items to it.
I'm good.
As am I.
You do consent. Good stuff.
Thank you.
Okay, item number eight, downtown restroom bid award, Dwight Curtis and Gary Redner. Good day, Dwight.
Oh, the long-awaited restrooms.
Yes, yeah.
All right, well, as you know, we'd gone out to bid for the public restroom project for downtown Friendship Square area, and of those that came in, we had five responsive bids, and we started out with the project estimate back in December when we met with you at $157,710, is, and that's what we projected this to be, and we had $170,000 budgeted for the fiscal year 16 budget. We've already used $1,250 of this through bid preparation, and remaining, that's left is $168,750. Of our bids, we had the five, and of the five, four came in, you know, within $10,000 of each other, with one outlier, and quality contractors came in at $191,600. And of course, that's over what we had estimated. These were all qualified bids, and these bids are good for 30 days. Our recommendation in your packet is, if we can come up with the additional funding, is to award the contract to quality contractors in the amount of $191,600. Also, we would like to contract with Design West Architects, who actually produced the design for contract administration, and the amount that they've quoted is $8,550. And have a contingency in there of $8,000, total of $208,150. What we don't have funding for, and to be discussed here, is $39,400.
Gary?
As Dwight indicated, the budget, original budget for this was $170,000, we used $1,250, I believe was the number-
Yes.
-for bid prep, leaving a balance of, with his proposal there that you saw in front of you, the calculation, about, shortfall of about $39,000. Like, some other folks have been looking around, trying to find some way to make this happen. It's been talked about for several years, and we understand that we're in an upmarket. We also understand that when you have four bidders within about a little less than 5% of each other, those bids are obviously supported in the market. So, there are some choices you can make. Those choices are to accept the bids and find additional funding, to look at doing anything else with the contract, with the project itself. As the council knows, we've looked at alternatives in the past, we've talked about ways to perhaps make it less expensive, none of those were acceptable to the council, which is how we ended up where we are. Looking at additional funding, I've talked to the executive director of the Urban Renewal Agency, Bill Belknap, and they will have a meeting a week from Thursday, and in talking to Bill, he believes that the MURA would be willing, or he, he would be comfortable in presenting a proposal to them in the amount of $15,000 to help us meet this shortfall. That, of course, leaves a balance of approximately $25,000 short. We have looked at potential other, of course, we could dig around in capital projects and try to find it. As it happens, we are, just will be receiving within the next week, the disbursement, the rebate from the Urban Renewal Agency for Alturas Technology Park Urban Renewal Area. That will come in about $40,000 higher, roughly $40,000 higher than the original budgeted amount of $213,000 that we had in the 2016 budget. It would be possible to get additional funding from there. Now, that is unrestricted funding coming to the city. It's not like you're not spending the dollars, but it is unlooked-for monies. This is a project that the council has worked on for years, staff has worked on, the community's participated in it. Understand it's not the best bid environment, not the best construction environment, however, we've been seeing this trend in our public works. So, the choice is, do we delay in the hopes that hopefully the economy will stay, stay healthy and the cost of construction will come down? An unlikely scenario, but it's up to the council how you want to proceed. We have the funding, if the council wishes to, we could make the decision contingent upon the URA's consideration of the request for $15,000 as well, however you desire to do that. Staff's recommendation that with all the things going on in downtown, the time and expense that's gone into this project, that we proceed with those additional funding sources.
Clear. Who wants to start?
I'd like to.
I would love to, if you'll let me.
No, go ahead.
The $208,150 that you're recommending does not include the design costs that we've paid, which was how much?
I don't remember.
$15,000, sound about right?
Yeah, it's about that, yeah. The exact number, I don't-
And it also does not include the water and sewer work that has to be done to tie this into those systems. We're doing that force account.
Correct.
Do you have an idea what those are worth?
I do not.
Les, any idea?
That didn't sound good.
He's just recollecting. He's trying to bring it up.
I don't have a, a cost for those at this point. Those are being done through city forces, I think is what you meant by force account, different terms, but in-house work on that, so it'd be just our labor and material cost associated with that, but I would guess less than $5,000, maybe three to five at best.
Okay, thank you. So, in total, approximately, we're up to $228,000 for this.
I agree with you.
Okay. We, I, I don't remember for sure, but I believe that back when we were in the, we want to do this stage, we were talking $120,000. Somewhere along the line, it grew, and the city council approved a budget line item for $170,000 in this fiscal year. So, that's, that is the number we're dealing with. But when this was brought before this committee on November the 23rd, the estimate was down to $157,000, correct?
Yes, $157,710.
Okay. So, this bid is 40 grand over the architect's estimate going into bid, correct? Is the architect here today?
He's not.
Have you talked to him about any ideas they've got about what's happened here?
They didn't really have an explanation, just prices have gone up and that the, the construction companies just, they just have enough work. It's really, they're not starving for business. And, and that's, they were sitting there when this was brought up in our meeting, and nobody seemed to have an issue with that statement, so.
Well, back on, I went back and looked at the video of this committee's meeting on November the 23rd, and there was a fair amount of discussion about what if this comes in out of the money. And my last words at that meeting right before it adjourned were, "Good luck." I wish I had been wrong.
Was it for lack of trying?
I don't doubt that, Gary, but I, I just cannot agree to finding money anywhere and everywhere to fund this, no matter what. And as I said at the beginning of the Public Works meeting, November the 23rd, I am a fan of this. I have wanted this for years. I would love to see a public restroom in downtown Moscow. But this, as, as I think Wayne Kraus pointed out at the November 23rd meeting, we already knew this was going to cost more than a, than a house, and it only has the bathrooms, it doesn't have any bedrooms with it. So, I'm, I'm not, I am, I will not vote to, to approve going with the staff's recommendation. My preference is to go back and look at modular. Modular, based upon the numbers that Dwight had last November, came in about $168,000, I'm stretching here, you may have the numbers.
These are updated, and like I told you earlier today, the person that handles this was not there. I did the best I could with the information that the person that was there had, and I did add in the brickwork. It's only, it's about four, four grand on the basic models, and for a similar sized as to what we were designing, it was about $6,000. This has the 10% contingency.
In the number. So, the 177 is a similar facility product? In other words, it's, it's a lavatory in each? It's two separate restrooms with, with either two toilets or a toilet and a urinal and lavatories? It's comparable model?
Very comparable.
Not in terms of-
It was actually what I used-
Not in terms of style and looks, but in terms of facility?
Yes.
Okay.
Did Historic Preservation look at any of the modulators as part of their considerations?
I gave them the, the whole presentation. Their preference was a facade that fairly well-matched the downtown area. That's where the brick came from. Walter did ask some questions earlier that I did a little more research on, and on this brick, you know, these are slabs, they build them on the ground, on a, basically on a frame, and they, they come up and they look like whatever the, the mold is that's on the ground. That's where you get your brick stamp, if you wanted it pre-bricked, so to speak. And they use a, if your whole facility is going to be just a single color, they can use a coloration of the concrete. In our case, where you would have brick, the preference isn't usually that you have everything the same color, you just want the brick, the brick color, and then you have your, your mortar in between that's different. So, then they use some kind of an acid wash of some sort. And she told me that, you know, it lasted fairly well. She said, you know, 10 years or so, you might have to repaint it, but you don't get the used brick look that the Historic Preservation Commission was, was asking for. It's just brick color. And so, I guess that's just a, a preference of whatever you want.
Did, did this, it's got $3,000 for site work, does that include the Public Works hookups and that sort of thing?
$30,000, yes.
Would that be the same for both? Both the DWA design and this one?
Oh, it's the same. I used, I used the price of the site work on the Design West to use for all of them. I figured, you know, all the infrastructure's going to be the same regardless, so that's why they all have the same site work. And some of these numbers are last year's numbers, and the gal today told me that she thought there was a price increase, but I don't know what that was, and the guy that, that deals with that was not in. So, I don't know how much more, I wouldn't guess it's a whole lot, but there would be some increase.
I appreciate that you've looked around and you've talked to community development, and I really want this to move forward, so I'm in favor of using, hopefully, the money that comes in from the Alturas and the $15,000, so I'll just get it done.
And on my behalf, I'm just gagging over the thought that a double-two-holder calls costs as much as a house, and just rubs my fur so much the wrong direction. And I was quite ready just to reject the whole works, but given the fact that we have some other resources that have been identified as being a potential use to finish it as is, and given the fact that this is something that we've been needing and wanting for years and years, I, too, am okay with going ahead, because if we hadn't found the extra money, that would have been just a non-starter for me. And so, for me, I'd go forward and say, yes, let's proceed with the identified monies if we can get the URA board to approve their participation as well. Gary?
So, since you don't have a consensus to bring it through to the full council-
Yep.
-make part of the proposal, funding proposal, $50,000 from the URA, and then leave that up to the URA a week from Thursday?
Yep.
Yeah, I know, this is just an aside, and this is just to say to Walter that I know we keep using this house building as the example, but this is in nowhere, this is an institutional restroom facility for the public. I don't think it's a great comparison because of the use for what the building is. I understand material-wise is how you're looking at it, but I think just with the amount of people that use it during the, will use it during the farmer's market and throughout, I just, just, just pulling it back into the public world and what it's for, I would just, just wanted to say that.
And also, the fact that four of those bids came in not far off of each other tends to indicate the construction climate we're dealing with at the moment, and not likely to see that change anytime soon.
You can buy the same facility for something under $200,000.
I'm not sure it would be the same relative to-
It would have two toilets and a lavatory on the women's side, it would have a toilet, a urinal, and a lavatory on the men's side. The same facility, same functional facility.
Well, functional could be a pole building, too, and-
Well, if that would be cheaper, I'd probably go that way.
I'm sure it would be, but I don't think that's exactly what the citizens are looking for either, so. So, I'm willing to go out on a limb and say, if we can get those monies, but seeing as we have differences among the ranks, and I know the other counselors would like to weigh in on this as well, I think we'd go for a regular agenda item and jump into the pit with the short knives.
Okay. We'll bring it forward.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Okay, that's the end of the regular meeting. At this time, we have reports, and first report up is the sanitation pickup routing changes from Tim Davis.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
As the committee recalls, prior to implementation of the single-stream recycling program, Leito Sanitation had proposed elimination of alley pickup, and in mid-January, along with that proposal, came some routing changes. The routing changes did take place. I reported to the committee at that point in time that likely within 60 to 90 days, there would be additional rerouting. We are in that phase now. LSI is proposing to do some additional routing changes here in April. My purpose is just to keep the committee in the loop. Approximately 315 or so folks that were affected by the most recent change will be affected with the new one as well. Total, we're looking at about 850 routing changes, and these are day changes only. And the whole drive behind this is to try to get back and get as efficient as- And the whole drive behind this is to try to get back and get as efficient as possible with solid waste collection as well as the new recycling collection.
I can't resist. Speaking of driving behind, in what you just said, the drive behind this, you're not moving out of alleys, are you?
No.
Thank you very much.
I think it's just a day change, wasn't it?
That's why I said, day change only.
So, anyway, so the usual procedure for notifying everyone goes forward?
Yeah, LSI is working on direct mailing to everybody involved. And usually what happens is if they do get any of those mailers returned, they try to do a door hanger. I ran a query through our billing system to get some accurate addresses for them, for both owners and renters, so I think they're good to go.
I was just curious, you know, you, the, you've had the advertising in the paper with the single stream and, and you can, people can call if they have questions. Have you been getting calls or has LSI been getting any calls with people trying to understand what to put in the bins or any questions about distance?
I, I believe they've been fielding some calls down at the recycling center. Most of the calls I've been receiving are just new sign-ups to get the carts.
Oh, okay.
We're well over seventy percent on the residential side for participation, so I'm still, I'm still getting a handful of new sign-ups each day.
And your, and your recycled, your, your sorting center data shows four percent?
Little over four percent, yes.
And you indicated to us before we went into this that Pullman and Lewiston were seeing what kind of contamination?
I don't know that I had the numbers from Lewiston, but I know Pullman boasted around two percent, but they do accept glass in there, so they are paying extra for that glass contamination.
So, but we're not, we're not, we're not doing bad?
Under five is considered excellent.
Well, yeah, and the article said that most people, most cities were doing ten to fifteen percent contamination.
Most of the communities I've spoke with said if you can keep it between five and fifteen, you're doing good. And I, and I think under five, we have to say is excellent. So, Moscow's doing a great job.
Well, I think the LSI people are doing a great job of eyeballing what's going in the truck and taking out things they can see that are obvious and leaving them stuck in the lid so people know this is not an acceptable item and can adjust accordingly. I think it's a very good educational process.
And continuing education with the multiple-family dwellings is also going to be a good thing. Cool. Thank you.
You bet.
And lastly, but not leastly, we have the FOG, Fat Oil and Grease Best Management Practices Manual Report. Ty.
Good afternoon. Thanks for talking with me here and squeezing me in. So, last time we talked about this was at the council meeting in December where we had some proposed changes to Title V, Chapter III, and that was regarding the city's FOG reduction program against FOG as fat, oil, and grease. At that time, we said we'd come to you and give a final report on the Best Management Practices Manual that will be for commercial food service establishments. We have completed a review of that manual and that was included in your packet. There are really kind of two sides to this manual. First is it is an informational reference guide. There's all the information of why is FOG a problem in the city? What is a grease interceptor? What do I have to do to maintain it? Those things that are in the code that aren't specifically spelled out, that starts to get into that and give the information for the who, what, why, and where. Secondly, it is a regulatory compliance guide. It lets the affected business owners know exactly what's going to be expected of them. It is referenced by the code and it is fully enforceable by Title V, Chapter III. I'll get quickly into some of the changes we made, the, the big changes that might really, you might have noticed there. It's kind of a big manual, but I'll highlight some of these here. The big ones on page three, it talks about the hydraulic capacity reduction for an interceptor to let you know what is in compliance and what is not. And traditionally, for, for traditional designs, twenty-five percent reduction of the capacity and that would be in the grease layer at the top and any solids at the bottom, that's a point where it starts to become ineffective at removing the, the fog from the waste stream. New technologies have come about and there are a ton of them out there that are, and there are more coming all the time. So, and they can handle more than that. So, we didn't want that to be limiting to, to the businesses and, and be something that would discourage getting this new technology that's effective and in the long term would be cost-effective because that means lower maintenance on their part. There's a little clarification on the storm drain section there regarding spills. It had talked about using kitty litter and some absorbent pads in the storm drains if, if, you know, there, if it had to be located near a storm drain, which in some cases is going to happen just by the nature of where the businesses are and where the infrastructure is. And so, that just cleared it up to let you know that, you know, putting kitty litter into the storm drain is not the management practice that we're looking for here. That's to use to clean up the spill. That's something that you can then sweep up and, and, you know, throw into the trash. Another thing we did is redesigned the interceptor fix, fix, excuse me, figures there. Like a big thanks to Kerry Edwards in our engineering department. He did a great job with those. And it really makes it clear, I think, compared to the previous manual, to see exactly how that works. And that's a big part of it too, you know, it comes back to the education, the, the how is this happening and why do I need to do the maintenance? What, what changes? That's really it. If you have any specific questions about the, the manual, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you.
If you had any contact, comment from the commercial users of these since you've started talking about it publicly?
We have had a little bit. That's kind of the next step here is really the outreach to them. We'll do an individual targeted outreach, mailing to let everyone know who doesn't know at this point, this is coming, this is who I am, who we are. And that will be, also be inviting them to, we'll have kind of a forum or workshop similar to what we did with the council, kind of introducing it, showing some of those pictures and, and getting some of the people who might not be familiar with this educated about that. And again, introducing ourselves, saying, you know, letting everyone know who we are, how they can reach us and that we're here to, to be their allies in this. That's the, the tact that we're taking with this is we're working on this together with the community, with the business community to, to reach a goal here, which is to improve our wastewater conveyance and treatment systems.
Well, I was hoping to get a tour at some point of the, of the wastewater plan.
They'd be happy to take it anytime.
Oh, yes.
I think it's totally cool.
They think so too.
Yeah, it's amazing.
It is. It's really interesting out there.
Several times.
Yes.
Interesting every time.
Todd would love to have you out there for sure.
So, anyway, sounds like a good report.
Yeah.
And good updates to the manual. So, congrats on that.
Thank you.
Are you going to be sending PDFs to the commercial?
This will be available. I believe we'll have this available on our website and so that the public can view it as well.
Yeah, because it's, it's great.
But yeah.
Yeah.
We'll talk to them and find out if, if anyone is, would prefer to have it only electronically. That saves us a printing there. So, that's something that's, that we can actually try and test the waters there before we go to a full print on this.
Good stuff. Thanks.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
And slightly over time, but not by much, so we're adjourned.
Thank you.